...week this week, so I will be busy tomorrow drawing the winning ticket for that event that'll be this Saturday. Today, we will meet candidates for Ward One. We have Darren Appert and Krista Hagberg with us today. Ward One represents citizens in generally the southeast part of the city in the residents' vote at the Fire Hall. We'll open today with the candidates introducing themselves and sharing with us why you are running for City Council. You'll have three minutes for your introductions, and then we will go into our question and answer session. We will rotate the answers as far as who answers first. And the answer period will be for two minutes unless I note differently, there will be one question that is a little bit more in-depth that will be three minutes. Jean here will serve as our timekeeper today, and she'll wave the yellow flag when there's thirty seconds left and then the red flag when time is up. All candidates have seen the questions prior to today, so there is no unfair advantage to going first. We'll start the clock when you start speaking. If you need me to repeat a question, please ask me to do so, and we'll conclude today by offering you the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. We ask that the audience please respectively listen to each candidate's answers and avoid conversations during the forum. Please also hold applause until the end of the forum, and finally, please turn off your cell phones.
Yeah, will you put that mic a little bit farther away from you, please?
Yep. Good. Perfect. Alright. Is that the...are you getting feedback? I'm still kind of hearing it.
It'll pick you up.
How much further? Is that good? We're good? That's much better. Alright. Are you still getting it, because I am?
Sounds good, I do.
Okay. Alright. Is everyone ready?
Sure.
Perfect. I'm going to, again, ask both of you to introduce yourselves. This will be three minutes, and I'll have Darren go first.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate Kiwanis hosting this. I'm Darren Appert. I've been a resident of Fergus Falls for the past six years. I've lived in the area for fourteen years. I've worked here in town for about twenty years, and currently have my own business downtown here in Fergus Falls, right on Lincoln Avenue. I've been a member of...school board member of LV School, past member of Fergus Falls Gymnastics Academy. I'm a current member of LV Church. And the reasons I'm running for reelection is we've got some things that we've been working on for the last almost four years now, and we've got some momentum. I want to keep that momentum going. I think we've done a lot of things. I've been told by several people that you did more in the last four years, and I'm not talking individually. I'm not going to use the word "I" too often tonight, because it's a "we" and "me" type of thing, a team effort, that we've accomplished a lot of things that hasn't been done in the past in that kind of volume, if you will. And I think some of the staff here will attest that we've challenged them quite a bit in the load of work that we kind of get in the cycle of things. So, I want to continue to do that. I have a passion for service, and on many, many different organizations, as board member or just as a membership, and just feel that I can give back. I have a little more time now. I'm an empty nester. I've got three girls, if I didn't mention that before. I've got two that are married, one that's just started college. So, have some time, have given time before, obviously, as running for reelection here. But I feel I can give back. I'm in a position where I can do that, so that's what I want to do. I want to continue the objectives that we have started the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
Excuse me. I'm Krista Hagberg. I work full-time as an office administrator at Kindred Family Focus here in town. We are a nonprofit, private foster care and adoption placement agency. My fiancee Kurt is active on the Fergus Falls Hockey Association Board of Directors. We have a nine-year-old son, Corbin, and a six-year-old daughter, Quinn. They are both avid hockey players, and we spend a lot of time skiing, camping, swimming, and generally being outdoors. I have lived in Fergus Falls my entire life, and I've seen this community bounce back after periods of great change. As a working mother of two, I want to ensure opportunity and stability for their futures here. I want to express my love for Fergus Falls and hope that you guys love it as much as I do. I was born just outside of Fergus Falls, and I was raised here and loved everything about it. I come from a very large family, and they have owned and operated a business here for more than fifty years. I graduated from Fergus Falls Senior High School, and even during that time, as I was going to college, I was a full-time resident here. I commuted back and forth every day from Alexandria, not because I didn't have other options, but Fergus Falls has always been my home. I have a passion to serve Fergus Falls with new perspectives. I want to see progression in areas of employment, community services, and recreation. I have the persistence to see that concerns are not only addressed, but held with the utmost ethical mindset and priority. I have worked for some of the best community supportive agencies in the town, and these experiences have given me the opportunity to sit down with people from very diverse backgrounds, and I've seen firsthand that the community has an unwavering compassion for the people that live here. I believe now, more than ever, that Fergus Falls is ready for change and strong representatives that lead with integrity and respect.
Thank you. We'll now go into our question-answer part of the forum today. Again, most of the questions will have two minutes for each candidate to answer. The first question, we'll start with Darren. The city's 2018 budget is just over forty-five and a half million dollars annually. Please tell us about your budget and finance experience, demonstrating how you would be a fiscally responsible candidate.
Well, currently, I'm on the tax levy committee. We sat down early on with good instructions from Mr. Sonmore as our finance director, and I think we all kind of came to the table with the idea that we're going to have to do some cutting. We started out at eleven point four percent. We now are at six point five percent with a little ways to go, and that's before the county gives our tax number off of that. And so, we hope to be somewhere in the three percenter, I'm hoping anyway. We've got another meeting next week. We're still fine-tuning. It's not an easy thing to do. Your task with shaving off some things and removing things from the line item that you might have a little partiality to, or you think that would probably be a good idea, or you've had some input from some other people. But when you're trying to not have a big impact on the tax levy for constituents, some of those things just have to be crossed off that list. So, there are some tough decisions to be made at times. I feel I'm in a pretty good position to do that. I've been on other finance committees over the years and very conservative. However, if there is a need for something, I'm going to definitely be willing to look at those instances where they may be a need for funding that particular item. But in general, we've fine-tuned this thing pretty well. We've got a little bit ways to go, and I think overall, the city is doing a very good job of keeping the lid on too much of a tax levy increase. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hagberg?
I have managed budgets for various types of organizations, as well as a wide variety of projects and events. I have been in charge of million-dollar donor basis for property expansion. I have tracked incoming dollars and expenditures over the course of several years, and then completed and distributed reports to the funding entity showing where the money was utilized. I was in charge of improving invoicing, accounts payable, and accounts receivable. I have worked directly with vendors during project completion and managed the communication with finance staff as needed. I have helped in the decision-making processes and manage communications. I have also worked directly with state grant proposals and have written and reported for those. I prioritize financial necessity, and that is one of the biggest responsibilities that the council has to who it represents. As a candidate, I can make sure that we're addressing those budgetary concerns that affect the most people with the best outcomes first. I plan to be completely transparent in that regard, within the scope of the council's bylaws and my ethical beliefs.
Thank you. The next question, I think we would all agree that there's a lot going on in the city right now. What do you consider your top three priorities for the city, and how do they fit into the budget? And this time, we will start with Krista.
There are very many worthwhile ventures in the works throughout the city right now, but I am foremost in favor of projects that are going to increase recreation and entertainment opportunities for youth and families. There are many kids that are not interested in the arts or music or sports, and many kids that haven't reached developmental goals that those activities require. Also, many of these activities have fees that can be a barrier for people to have to pay. That being said, making recreation affordable for everyone to access has to be a priority. We need to look at investing in recreation that will provide fun, safe, and inclusive places for people to spend their free time. Secondly, having worked with the underemployed and unemployed population through the Minnesota Workforce Center, I want to see there be more opportunities, not only to bring new businesses in to create jobs, but to connect people seeking employment with businesses that are having a hard time filling vacancies and retaining strong employees. There are also a large number of people receiving income subsidies like SSI or SSDI that want gainful employment. And if we can accommodate that demographic, I think that it could be vital to our workforce decline and help re-energize the local economy. My hope is to bridge that gap and make it possible for people who receive other sources of income to work and not have the threat of losing those necessary benefits. Lastly, I would like to see business development take place in all of the unused store space and empty lots around town, such as the previous Kmart, Sunmart, and Target buildings. They are invisible, high-traffic areas that could support retail and entertainment facilities. And before the city expands further outward, I think we really need to look at what we can do and utilize the space from within first.
Thank you. Mr. Appert?
Yes, the three top priorities that I would have is the infrastructure and streets. We've worked pretty hard to expand the budget a little bit to get a twenty percent increase in our street improvement plans. So, you drive around town, and that's probably the number-one thing that I hear back from constituents is, when are we going to fix our streets? It's a big task, because it's monetarily in several million dollars to get it to where it needs. It's been something that's been lagged over the years, and we're playing catch-up a little bit. So, we thought we'd better at least address it for right now to get a twenty percent increase in that plan and that funding. The second area is community development, where we're looking at the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan and trying to get a potential for an amphitheater and some marketing for like a farmer's market or other business item ventures that want to set up shop downtown and have a space. We've got the walks, the river walks that we're developing. There's grants that we've been fortunate enough to receive that'll help along with some of this funding for some of the downtown areas, including those parking lots. So, we're getting a long ways on these trails and bicycling. Housing development, that's part of the other side of that, where we've been successful in having apartment buildings built in town here to accommodate people that were willing to move to town and try to get jobs here. So, the third area is economic development. We've recognized that the city may not be in the best position to do that, so that's been outsourced, so to speak, to Greater Fergus Falls Development Corp., and they're the experts in that, so we're going to allow them to run with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is a two-part question, actually, and I'm going to start with Darren first. The first part of the question is, this year, we have seen changes in the city's economic development structure, which you just alluded to. What are your views on those changes, and what is your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?
Well, that was the big thing, is I think sometimes you've got to recognize that you're not an expert in everything that you do. We saw that. Some people stepped up to the plate and was able to fill that void, and Greater Fergus Falls Corp. is off and running. And they've made some goals for the person that's going to be doing that. They're also not just sitting along the sidelines waiting to see things happen. They're actively engaged. I've been supportive of that concept and that idea from the very beginning, and we can't always do it alone. We need help. This is not a journey that's going to be done with just two feet. This is many, many feet that's going to be involved to get us to where we need to be. The economic, you know, the picture, we look at, we see these buildings around town. It's not good to see. It's not a good representative when somebody's driving down Main Street. What can be done, you know? So, it's a group effort. It's not something that one person has the idea to fix that. It's not an "I" thing, like I alluded to earlier. It's a "we" thing, and as a group, it's not just one person in one office somewhere that's going to be able to figure that out. It's a combined effort and a community effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The second part of the question, some of the challenges to economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability, and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions for these? We'll go with Darren first again.
Okay, the affordable housing, I guess I talked a little bit about some of the apartment buildings that developers have come to town and built. We had a housing study done here probably three or four years ago, probably four or five years ago now, that said we were something like three hundred units short for where we needed to be. That study showed us and showed other developers and gave them the kind of the momentum to want to build some apartments here in town, and there's been a lot of activity in that area. So, I think we've come a long ways in that. Are we quite to that number yet? No, we're not, but developers have really stepped up to the plate in that area. Are you going to go and do all three of these? Are you going to break them down individually, as far as the childcare availability and workforce shortages? That's all one, right?
That's all one, right. Yep.
Childcare availability, that's a tough one. It's been ongoing for, you know, as long as I can remember, twenty-five years ago when I needed daycare. My wife and I started Pelican Learning Center in Pelican Rapids, a daycare center up there. We saw a need with the help of Essential Initiative Fund back in the day. They gave us some seed money to get that started, and it was a huge thing back then. It's just as big today as it was then. Does government need to get involved with it? I think that's where we need to find out where our impediments are. Is some of that licensing and some of those requirements? Yes, we need vetted providers. Yes, we need safe premises. But where are the impediments coming from that we can't...why can't centers make it? Or why can't a private daycare provider be...where's the stumbling blocks with that? Where are the impediments with that? So...
Thank you.
I guess that was a red flag.
Sorry. I didn't think you would do that. Maybe it's a good thing.
Krista, we'll go to you now, and because it was a two-part question, I'll repeat the first part of the question, which is, this year, we have seen changes in the city's economic development structure. And what are your views on those changes, and what is your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?
I am in support of any organization or economic structure that's working toward growth and improvement for the city of Fergus Falls. The Greater Fergus Falls staff and board are made up of an incredibly knowledgeable group of professionals who have the drive to revitalize this city. There have been a lot of questions surrounding this new private, not-for-profit organization, but their focus on recruiting and retaining businesses and creating jobs, along with the collaboration of the board members and their community connections, can only lead to bigger, better things. I believe if there's a cohesive working relationship between the city staff, the council, the Greater Fergus Falls Board, and all the other economic development groups, that we can have the ability to make a noticeable impact on economic growth. I want to ensure that the decisions being made by all the groups do coincide with the progress that's already being made within the current economic improvement model. There's already been significant amounts of time and money spent and invested in many of these developments in process, and I want to make sure that we are not duplicating these efforts so that we don't hinder any forward movement.
Thank you. The second part of the question, again, I'll repeat that as well. Some of the challenges to economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability, and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions for these?
Affordable housing is a widely under-addressed concern for Fergus Falls, and what has been deemed affordable in some housing developments has left a lot to be desired. After attending several city council meetings where it's been mentioned that the east and west wings of the RTC campus are being considered for affordable housing units, that's given me a lot of hope that we're on the right track for utilizing these great structures to provide homes that are not only affordable but comfortable, which turns into childcare being a top reason for employees to have to take time off, and this hits the bottom line of every business. It leaves loss of productivity, the cost of bringing in temporary help or paying overtime to staff that have to fill in, as well as the cost of finding or training a replacement if the parent should have to resign due to lack of childcare. It's not unusual for families to contact dozens of providers only to be put on waiting lists for up to months to years. And this has serious implications for women that want to go back to work after the birth of a child. Low-income families and single-parent families are hit especially hard here. Low-income families typically do not have paid time off, and single-parent families don't have another significant other to fall back on for lack of childcare or a second income if something should happen to that childcare. The loss of childcare also means the loss of a job, and parents with children with special needs and parents that work non-traditional shifts have almost no choice for licensed daycare. What I would like to see is a lot of businesses working with daycare providers to see if we can supply some onsite childcare options, such as several Minnesota cities have already done, where they've refurbished part of their office space or building space or purchased a building nearby to provide childcare for their staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fourth question is our more complex question, and we'll start with Krista, and this is about the Kirkbride. Again, you'll have three minutes to answer. The city council has made progress on reducing the footprint of the RTC campus. How would you continue to work with the council and citizens on the next steps? And is there anything in the past that you would have done differently, and if so, why?
Well, I recently had the privilege of getting a firsthand walkthrough of the campus, including portions slated for demolition, as well as the Kirkbride Tower itself. Not having been a part of the council or the decisions that were made over the past years, this makes it a tough question for me. RTC holds a certain legacy here, and it is a huge staple of our history and our landscape. However, I've seen the erosion of the structures there inside and out, and while saving what can be saved and making the hard decisions not to move forward or some of the attempts to keep or reconstruct certain buildings, I firmly believe that the city has done their due diligence in the current status of the campus so far. There have been ideas set in motion to retain the east and west wings, like I mentioned before, for affordable housing developments, and I feel that the efforts that are continuing are going in a direction that I can be supportive of, and I hope to see forward movement in this in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Appert?
Yeah, you talked about the east and west detached housing group that's currently looking at it, which we hope will come to fruition. That would give us some more progress towards our housing shortage and retain some of the campus in the current picture. We also are currently looking at doing some RFPs on the main tower and the memorial building. Those would be a couple other parts of that facility that we'll hopefully be able to save. And that's the exciting part, is everybody wants that tower turned into something. We envision some great things for that. So, yeah, we want to save what we can. There's areas of that that's just going to be very tough and very difficult to keep. They're in such poor repair. So, we'll see how that all comes along, whether we got more developers stepping up to the plate. Time will tell on that. We're going to be receptive to those ideas, as we have in the past, and what we had talked about as being our motive and direction for that facility up there. So, you know, part of mine here would be the past, what have you done differently up there? And I don't know that I'm going to look back and dwell on that, because we're moving ahead, and we've had plans for the last couple of years on what's going to be done up there. But if you look back, probably going back even before my time, is just the enormity of the whole thing, how gigantic it is, and maybe I had tried to piece that out a little differently. So, anyway, you can look back and think that as a complex that was quite large, and even Campus Development Group, which has taken some of the other outbuildings to the east and north, they've done wonderful things with that, and we've got some pretty cool stuff coming with the Nurses Cottage. So, some of that campus is and will be revitalized. So, I'm looking for good things to come up there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Darren. And serving on the city council is obviously a big-time commitment and can be unpredictable. Tell us about your ability in this capacity, and additionally, along the same lines, communication with your constituents is important since you reflect their interest. And if elected, how will you stay connected to the people that you represent?
It is a big-time commitment. It's probably taking two to three times longer than I anticipated when I took or won, I guess, won the election. It's time management is a big thing. You're going to be returning phone calls in the evenings. You get emails that you can, I guess, return at your...whenever it works out for you. Yeah, text messages and the phone calls that I talked about happen at any time. Evenings, mornings, midday, weekends, holidays. You get them at all times of the year. So, yeah, being available is a big thing. As far as keeping in contact with constituents, I talk to people virtually every week to some degree, and they don't always have to be from your ward. You hear from other people outside your ward as well on occasion. But, you know, we all talk about Facebook. That's not my favorite way to keep in touch with anybody. I like picking up the phone. I'm in the relationship business. I've been in the insurance business for thirty-three years. It's all about relationships, so I like talking to people directly, if at all possible. So, that's how I feel. I think I probably do my job best. So, yeah, and I talked earlier about being an empty nester, so I do have a passion and the ability to give back to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
I believe that the most important part of any endeavor that you encounter in life is to show up and be truly present in what you're participating in. Everybody has the same twenty-four hours in a day, and it's how you make the best use of your time. I'm lucky enough to have a great support system in my life, but I'm also very efficient and organized and flexible, and I keep commitments when I make them. Since becoming a candidate and even before I filed, I have kind of made it my personal mission to attend all work sessions, council meetings, committee meetings, and any city-sponsored events that I can, just so I can be more well-informed. just so I can be more well-informed. I made myself accessible on various social media platforms. And I encourage anybody that wants to reach out to access my phone number, my email address and stop me in the grocery store if you want. I want to hear from you and I promise to respect your time and your concerns.
Thank you. Our next question is another important issue to the city and is with respect to the possibility of a community aquatic facility. A citizen-led committee has represented or has presented findings and recommendations for next steps in that project. What is your view on the project? And we'll start with Krista on this one.
I'm a huge supporter of the community aquatic facility project. I'm actually thrilled that this is finally coming to a point where we can start making decisions. I feel that if we really want to bring people and new businesses in, that we need to work on making Fergus Falls more appealing and inviting. I understand that there are a lot of wonderful lakes and bodies of water surrounding Fergus Falls, but many of them are further out and make that hard for people to access because of transportation issues. Having an outdoor water park facility would be a safe gathering place for kids and families, as well as provide summer employment opportunities for high school and college students. It could also serve as a support for other summer programs, such as the Parks and Rec Kids Camp program or other church groups. And it will help bring in surrounding seasonal populations. I think it would also complement the facilities around it, such as the housing units already on the RTC campus and the developments being considered there.
Thank you. Darren?
Hi. Yeah, I've been supportive all along of the Aquatic Center. I do see that there's a need here. I guess in just about every community that I've ever lived in, there's been some kind of swimming pool available to people to go and enjoy in the summertime. I guess the other thing that I've looked at and I look at things sometimes a little bit differently than others, I want to make sure going forward, and now they're doing the fundraising piece of the Aquatic Center, to see if that's going to have enough support in that area. I guess I want to make sure that all the players are at the table. I think we're probably, we sometimes as a community, conservative in our views in some aspects, and I do too. But as I've gotten older, we kind of look at quality over maybe quantity, if I can put it in that respect. Maybe we don't look at something to be bigger than it can be. And I guess what I mean by that is I want to make sure that if we're going to go ahead with an aquatic center, that we've looked at many of the other entities or players that might want a piece of this and be able to add on to it and have a bigger community center in general. So, in other words, are we thinking big enough? And there's ways to pay for that. There's time. We can wait until we have the money. It's just like buying something that you've saved your money for. And it's a quality item. You're willing to spend waiting a little bit more time to get what you really need. So, I want to make sure that the needs have been totally addressed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our final question and we'll start with Darren. The city council is a nonpartisan body of government, yet our country, as we have seen, especially over the last couple days, is more polarized than ever. You will be working with aldermen, staff and constituents who may think differently than you do. Tell us how you will successfully work as part of a team for the benefit of Fergus Falls.
Well, I don't need two minutes for this question. Treat people like you'd want to be treated. I mean, kind of an old saying, I was raised that way. It pretty much goes no matter where you're sitting, whether it's in Fergus Falls or Minneapolis or Denver or other cities within the United States. You don't go into someone with some preconceived notion of how that person's going to react to something. So, anyway, I guess that's pretty much where I wake up every day. There's no I in team. There's no partialities. There's no causes that I'm for necessarily. And as far as, you know, getting along with staff and other constituents and aldermen, I go back to what I said earlier. I'm in the relationship business. I've been doing it a long time. So, I work with people. I've been a part of a business that had 200 team members down to probably the smallest is where I'm at right today, where I'm my sole proprietor. So, pretty much worked with a lot of people. And while currently with the city, there's 200 there, I believe. So, working with big teams, small teams, it doesn't really matter. Treat people with respect. Make sure that you're not taking time away from what they're doing at the wrong time. So, respect their time. And I think you'll get along with most people if you have that attitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
Each council member and staff represents certain interests that have the right to be heard, whether we agree with it or not. The council chamber is certainly a valid place for honest disagreement, but I don't intend for it to be a place where you air personal disputes or agendas. Working as a united front will help to gain public trust in what's being decided during meetings on the citizens' behalf. I've always considered myself a person that is quick to listen and slow to respond so that I can make the best decisions with the information I've gathered. I work diligently on gaining a knowledge and a better understanding of how the city runs and what I need to know to make the best informed decisions that I can.
Thank you. This comes to the end of our time for questions. We'll wrap up by hearing closing statements from each of you as to why each of your constituents should vote for you. Each of you will have two minutes and we will start with Krista and then we'll go to Darren.
There's nothing that I want more than to continue seeing greatness build in and around Fergus Falls. That'll only come when we start looking at things from a different lens and one that's open-minded and ready to move forward. I hope to be a part of that by becoming the next city representative for Ward One. And I know that I may not have all the answers right now, but I'm resourceful and I make sure that I do my research. My purpose for running for city council is not to prove that I have better ideas, but that I will have new ones that are motivated by the voices of the people. It does take a village and I want to make sure that the voices are heard and respected from all perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren?
We have accomplished many things in the last four years, but we have a ways to go. As your council representative, I plan to continue working toward these three areas that I talked about earlier. And the number one was infrastructure and streets, community development and economic development. I will continue to improve and grow and expand on these needed objectives, along with looking for potential other opportunities to improve the jewel that Fergus Falls is and do so with the least amount of impact on the taxpayers. We look for grant opportunities. We look for requests and support about fundraising on some of the projects that we've done in town. We, as a council and city, explore bonding options and proceed only when it's right for Fergus Falls residents. I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to be part of this council forum and I would appreciate your support on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you to Darren and Krista for running and putting service into action on behalf of everyone in Fergus Falls. And thank you to everyone here for attending today. As I said before, tomorrow, we will meet the candidates for Ward Two. So, please join us. And as always, please remember to vote on November 6 so your voices can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.